You want to have a meal here before we start, so that's alright with all of you?
I don't think we can get too many complaints.
So, uh, y'all ready now? Paul, you're on, Paul for the last one that also.
I just would come tonight thanking you for the many blessings of life. We ask your blessing on this council tonight, any decisions that might be made, have made with you in mind. We ask your blessing on this food that we might be nursing to our bodies and their bodies to your service. God has just lead us, guide us, and direct us, these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Paul. Tracy, I'm not.
I can't, man.
You can go about that diet. If you have cell phones, please cut them off or put them on battery, it would be appreciated. We've already called the meeting board and already had a prior. So, uh, we need a motion to cover only what's on the agenda.
Make the motion to cover only what's on the.
Jury made the motion, need a second? Darrell Coburn, second, all in favor, say aye. All. Ask the clerk to read the minutes of the last meeting.
The town council, the town had to recommend a regular session at Hattenburg Town Hall on Monday, February 3rd, 2014 at 6:00 P.M. In the absence of Mayor Cochran, Mayor Pro Tim Schaffford called the meeting to order and wrote his call with the following results. Present as listed, absent as listed, guest as listed. Mayor Pro Tim Schaffford stated the meeting was open for the transaction of business. Motion was made by Councilmember Williams and second by Councilmember Coe to cover only the items on the agenda. Voting was as follows, all ayes, no nays. Mayor Pro Tim Schaffford asked clerk to read the minutes from the February 3rd, 2014 meeting. After reading of the minutes, motion was made by Councilmember Anderson and second by Councilmember Swinney to accept as presented. Voting as follows, all ayes, no nays. The clerk presented the council with a financial statement for period ending January 2014. After looking over same, a motion was made by Councilmember Williams and second by Councilmember Co to accept as presented. Voting as follows, all ayes, no nays. Mayor Pro Tim Schaffford asked council to view a handout given to them by the clerk and rule on paying the bills. Motion was made by Councilmember Co and second by Councilmember Swinney to pay the bills as listed by vendor in demand. Voting as follows, all ayes, no nays. Reviewing some old business, reviewing some old business, the council discussed and agreed to renew membership for all employees for Aireback. It had been discussed at an earlier meeting to cut the amount to ten people, but Aireback requires a list of all covered. A motion was made by Councilmember Williams and second by Councilmember Anderson to renew membership as it was last year. Voting as follows, all ayes, no nays. The council decided with the absence of the mayor that several items in this session should be tabled into the next meeting. The items were Hattenburg cleanup ordinance, school ordinance number 2014, maintenance on the youth baseball and softball fields. Also, the council discussed a prepaid credit card for the team. It was brought to their attention, then the mayor has a debit. The council discussed reimbursing fire department car batteries that they had purchased. A motion was made by Councilmember Coburn and second by Councilmember Swinney to reimburse as presented. Voting as follows, all ayes, no nays. The council discussed letting the citizens use the meeting rating on February 14th, February 15th, 2014 for a pancake breakfast. A motion was made by Councilmember Williams and second by Councilmember Coburn to accept as presented. Voting as follows, all ayes, no nays, abstain, Paul Anderson. The council and police department ordered a special certificate to Jeremy Galloway and his son Stephen for two persons from a burning mobile home on January 31st, 2014. There being no further business to come to the council, a motion to adjourn was made by Councilmember Williams and second by Councilmember Swinney with unanimous vote, they're on to adjourn. Meeting was adjourned at 6:45 P.M.
Heard the reading of the minutes, saw any correction or volition that may be made?
No.
Accept the motion. All, favor said the motion to accept as read. That's a Barney Schaffford's second motion, all in favor, say aye. I understand.
I do that question, did you get a accurate count for Aireback?
I talked with the mayor about that and where we're going to be in the charity pool or like a system.
We just don't go back and just renew the contract whatever's on. We don't, she hasn't listed names, they come, go, one more, five, we're going to take them off, we gotta take them off.
The financial statement and general funds, all of this here, that we have deducted any bills for this month, so this is just the raw general funds of the financial statement. We have thirty-seven, two oh eight sanitation fund is ninety-seven oh nine, fire department twenty-eight seventy-one, the grand total of forty-nine seven eighty-nine, gas tax is forty-nine thousand, street funds twenty-two nine three, total of seventy-one nine thirteen, park and reparations eleven fifty-two, city capital improvements twenty-five two thirty-one, occupational funds is eighty-one fifty-three, grand total of all is one fifty-six two thirty-nine. School tax has one thirty-seven three sixty-seven, reserve school tax funds fifty-five thousand two seventy-nine, total of one hundred ninety-two thousand six hundred forty-seven dollars. Again, they know bills have been deducted from this total amount here. Are there any questions on the financial statement?
Mayor, I thought we had a little bit more than twenty-five thousand capital improvement.
No, we used that gas pump.
I can come out of there.
Yeah. Fourteen thousand.
If you get the chance, when you get a chance, see if there's any way we can use that.
I'm going to, no, there's not, nobody.
We're trying to find out if they can use that.
I hope we can, because we can use some of it.
Or Bush hog, or Bush hog, it's still full and they're dying more too.
We'll just do that, whatever that is.
We'll be working on that.
It should not be any reason why we couldn't use that, I mean, that's.
I don't know, I ain't sure, I mean, I know you can use it to improve something here, I just don't know if I.
We asked them about the gas tanks and they were good, yeah, so surely they might.
Surely they might, they will if they want it.
We just make them aware.
We can use that if we're going to do.
We have, did we, I tell them, we have a motion to accept financial statement.
I have a motion to accept financial statement.
Jury made the motion, need a second?
I'll second.
Jamie, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Top is to discuss, the ones, the old business, one that was taken from the last meeting was Hattenburg cleanup ordinance in 2013 dash oh one, we passed this a while back to clean the town up. And I think it's time that we need to do it on the Springs right around the corner. Which, y'all had a copy of this order, you know, it packed it last two weeks ago, if you need, you still got here?
I didn't look at.
I know I had the original here. Also, uh, I want everybody's input on this, and I think what we need to do is turn this thing over to Scott Hunter, attorney. Let him write the letters to these people. He's the attorney, he knows what legal issues and things that we can do and can't do. Let him just handle from there, if they have a question, let them contact him, anything on litigation. So we'll start with Paul, see what y'all's feeling is on that.
I think, I'm sure I'm not capable of, you know, making a ruling on it, so I think it'd be appropriate for, turn it over to the lawyer and let him do the legal letter and follow through with it from there.
You talked about after we identify.
Yeah, well, yeah, after, that was going to be the next thing, that we would identify a problem that we want to start with cleaning up. We'll give him a list of it, give him the addresses where they live, phone numbers, location, all the information that we can provide through attorney. Then he goes from there, send out registered letters, if they don't sign them, then we'll come back and let the chief deliver what he needs to go to deliver on.
Who or how will we identify property?
I'll start with immediate downtown area and do that, Shen area, down on Hattenburg Road, immediate town. We're better over the brush, it's going to be, new police station, city hall, and we start with four or five. I mean, that's my opinion, tell me how the letter suggests that guy. Yeah, we don't, what is going so far, then we get this done and just throw out a little flutter, it's time. Just identify property that.
I mean, what, would you make the determination on who it is?
No, I think the council, we all didn't sit down and.
Go by complaint?
Well, just go by where it was grown up and mess it. We're not talking about getting out of rural areas, some farms, they're ain't prepared, we got cattle and horses and where they farm it, and soybeans or whatever hay, it's just immediate town here, where it's the eyesore. You're going to have a great new school, which I've stated this before, we're going to have a twenty-five million dollar school. They'll have a new police department, city hall, pavilion, daycare center, it needs to be cleaned and we need to clean up the town. I'll go one step further, we need to clean areas up first. And get it in good shape, then we can ask somebody else to clean theirs out. But, you know, we, we're going to have to be reasonable about this, we're going to just not go out and say, hey, you don't, we have to send you to prison. We don't want to try to work with them, talk to them, and they've got a problem. They can't, out of means, they can get it on the edge of the right of way, we can help them some, we can hold it off. If we keep going to crocking there.
Or we could get other cars or.
No, no.
Smaller, we're very.
Yeah.
I think you're right, get four or five, you get fifteen or twenty, it starts falling through the cracks. Get four or five, get that cleaned up, and then just keep moving. I mean, some people going, why don't you got so-and-so, what, but we've just got to plan our work and then work our plan.
I'll agree, you know, if they see us, and people start cleaning that, may not have to go to something, they may change their own then. You might not have to write letters, but immediate town, right in the areas where the brush store is going to be set, our other buildings are going to be set, going towards the school house, immediate town, that's where we need to start, going to work our way out.
I think we'll have a little more bite to it, probably a letter coming from attorney.
Oh, I know, we've tried it already, we wrote two and this.
That's what I was thinking, I mean, I seen it.
We did that twice, and they signed for them, and we have two meetings here, here today, and we had a few show up, or some of them didn't acknowledge, other than signed a receipt that we got back on the letter, that they had received, the notice that we sent out. Jerry?
Same way, we'll just start small, and I figure if your son does it, the other folk, like you said, might say I have to lean there.
We just got three or four areas that's real bad, some of them is not very bad as others, but to get them cleaned up, and I think that people will follow suit. I mean, it don't have to be all cleaned up overnight, they just show, we can improve the property and things, and we will work with them any way we can.
Like I was saying, I mean, it's, the people who read some letters out before, they should be the ones that give the letters and actually do something about it, enforce the letters in this town, make sure that we go through with it.
That's exactly right, we don't, we're not going to enforce it, don't do anything, kill the, kill the waters tonight, just get rid of it. Okay, I think everybody's in the same agreement, and what we'll do is just get together, open a point of committee, somebody's going to be able to work on the thing, and everybody will just sit down and discuss, and, I mean, I think it'd be good if everybody just get mobbed, and that way we'll all be working together. Okay, we'll do that. Item number two is the school tax ordinance from under 2014. Johnny Harden and assistant, I mean, elementary and principal both have signed that. I haven't seen any of the board members since we got the ordinance back, and Johnny, I talked to him, he said that we was welcome to do that, and, you know, let's go for one year, and when Scott broke this thing up, it was already in the middle, what, the middle of January, and he said, let's go to February, this February is the next, two, three, next January is the last day of January, so that would give it the twelve months.
You have a motion, move on?
Yeah, I did a motion for, we want the tax ordinance.
I like a motion, we'll move on the tax ordinance.
Barney made the motion, need a second? Darrell, second, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
You get that, Carl. Number three is maintenance on the youth baseball field and softball fields, Darrell and.
Got the, Swinney's on. Okay, you know, we had talked about the field too, taking dirt out of infield, putting new dirt back in. It's got a lot of glass and rocks and it's just not self-approving condition.
What we're going to do is scrape the baseline.
I said that well than direct field really.
Start from baseline, cut some perimeter and come back to home plate, behind the plate. Yeah, they dumped, they cleaned up some ditches and things, they take all that up there they cleaned out and just dump it and spread it. It's got glass and can and metal.
Look like it's sort of the senior building, so they took that dirt for the.
Do we have enough dirt there to get that?
We have plenty of it. We have, we have a lot over here on the straight and a lot of it.
It may cost too much money, but if we could do it, it'd be nice, if you could mix a little bit brick.
Well, Roger and Mike can play it, five hundred acres, six thousand.
I might do it.
You think I'm good enough to do that with it, to fix it? Maybe I'll be enough.
I bet it'd get, it would go a long way on infield, that stuff's good, you play a lot of days with that that you normally wouldn't play.
Roger's secretary today, and she was helping buy it to get it.
That's great. That's the only thing we need to work on, the second, it's not, they'll have an ice thing.
Yeah, major.
We're going to have to get on that, but I'll get it ready, before we get ready to start, we shot about the first tomorrow, we need to get that.
First Sunday may be here every time you.
Be good, the parents could have volunteer day.
I was going to say, if I could say something about that, I would be willing to help with that, and I've talked to some of the other parents that have children playing, and they would be able to help. The bathrooms, everything, they need, they need work.
What we probably need to do on that, Darrell, if we can get done with the road grader, if James and Major just take it and push all that up and haul, we'll haul that off and take it down and dispose of it, and then we'll haul it back. Cut the other, killer ends with it, and that can, we can get it done, it's going to take a little bit, and I'll talk to Don and see if it drives it a little bit. That's clever now, we should have to go up two inches deep anyway, something like that, to get all the rubbish out of it.
Like we got the building lines under it.
Given the infield?
Like so, like.
Nothing wrong?
Yeah, I think so.
Tell me if you can get in with it.
But it should, if we don't go over complaints, it shouldn't be no problem.
Take two out, the real.
Like Darrell said, if we get some parents involved, you know, we got a lot of static last year, but things wouldn't cleaned up, paper wouldn't cleaned up, whatever, if we can get the parents involved to be a part of that, rather than to be, you know, trying to down the council and the town, you know, we'll be a whole lot better off, we get them to work together. If they want a nice place for the kids to play, then work, work with it, help it, help it be a nice place. Maybe we can do that.
They usually do that all the time, didn't we? We'd always have a work day about once, twice a month, we get everything in good shape before the season started, and once it come time to start the season, everything was completed, placed and ready to go. If we start this about March the first, we just try to sort of done and scrape that, we don't have anything, you can't take that. I mean, I don't even know if you can do that, but it's going to bounce up and down, we go four inches in one place and half each other, so. Needs road grader, we can sit this, the depth on that thing and just get it off the top. All that's done tomorrow.
Also, track, there's a few strip lights that are out, and I want to get some of the armor.
At the park?
Street lights are just regular lights.
The lights on the track that we installed and then the main street light in there.
Can, we can probably, can we replace the ones that we put up?
Yeah.
They're not too high. Then if it's a regular street light, we'll get a lot of power, then come back and put them in. And I think, I passed this before, the best I can remember, we got some street lights to put up, that, I think Swinney made the motion, go ahead and authorize me to put them up, we got two street lights to put up, people has come, me and Paul, all of that, in the last week. Yeah, it's on the, down there on Garnier Circle, that on edge of Nick's Road, if you come from Dollar Store, take a left, is a dead spot, which the power poles are not sitting, they're on Highway 43, it's a little further down there, they said they'd light it up. You can't light the match, I could say we're to turn on Nick's.
That's right.
So, I'll get, I'll get the power, we have to do it from work order to get that done, so.
The two on the trail, it's below, they're in the parking lot.
Okay, two on the trail?
Yeah, one going into the parking lot.
And that old parking lot's on outbound. And we get those put up down there, when outbound power gets to it.
Did, if I can put my picks, I know this is, is old, but.
You know, I called Tim Prager, he said he'd go by there and sue Biden or try to fix it for us or what.
Well, he can fix it, I mean, always got to do take that out.
I don't know if he has any.
I had been over there, you know.
Yeah.
But we can check.
We'll be long, the kids can go back over there now, that one slide was, didn't have no doubt.
Hey, if it does what it did last year, you're going to have a hard time right now, but kids took enough dry time to do that. I mean, equipment range every other day, you have to stop drive fast over there.
Now, if, we may just, I mean, we have to wait till it drives up regardless, but they got two of the fields they can play on till, you know, what's kind of worse.
That's the main T-ball field.
Or not field two?
And you're going to get a lot of. You have T-ballers now.
I don't know, if we can catch the weather.
Yeah, well, if we get a break, we need to try it.
I'll just give that priority to the guys, put it here, block, finish the guys up and move, and Don, it'd be up to Don, we can haul it back, get it in front, and we get it hauled back and dumped, and he can spread that and lay it down if he will with the grader, and.
Somebody good operating the grader is what we can do.
Oh, he did, make it like a master tag.
We don't have. Can they still do the R C D?
Right, this department, right?
Yeah.
And I got a form I filled out last year and sent in, because I talked to Don about the money, and he said it's already been committed, so I said, I'm sending one in now, so I filled out that form and sent it in, so I'll ask Don about that too, because we sent the thing in.
Does Winfield got, for sure, Winfield got something there.
They still do.
You spoke to him as far as what it was.
It's false.
Don's on his way out, he needs, he needs to put it in Hattenburg, that now, so it's not going to hurt him.
Well, it won't be long, and I'll be coming back to Hattenburg.
But I filled out a form, had to fill out a form, getting blind, getting behind it. Okay, let's put this on a motion, so we'll have it to do the maintenance on this field number two.
I'm going to make the motion to do what we ever do, fix them.
You have a motion?
Let's give you a motion.
Darrell, second, pardon me.
I gave you a motion, yeah.
Yeah, I said we have a motion.
Oh, okay, I was down.
Darrell, he seconded the motion, so all in favor, say aye. Okay, the new business is discussed, the mileage for the use of personal vehicle, that if you have to go somewhere, I think we paid forty-one cents, and that went out forty years ago, going rates by fifty-six cents, so Hampton, Hableau's paying that, Barry Creek's paying that.
Fifty-six?
Yeah, all of us close, city hall except us today, but that's, that's what they're paying us, that's what the R S.
I knew it was fifty-six, fifty-eight. I'm saying whatever R S is, it's fifty-six.
We'll confirm this again tomorrow with the secretary of things, these are the towns to see.
We just make the motion that we did, that whatever the government says that.
You made that motion? Barney's back to the motion, whoever the other town is paying it, we're.
You making that motion or what the government allows?
That's what it is, it's about fifty-six.
It's been six, fifty-eight.
Well, what's fifty-six in the head?
I'm for whatever it's.
Okay, we'll go whatever, the others pay whatever we can. How the motion?
Who second?
Who second? All second? Is that all still?
Yeah. You got that, Tracy? I got it.
Mayor, did we need to do a motion on our business number one, clean that bill or ordinance?
No, we already passed that.
Okay, so we just start.
Discussion's finished, we all agreed, we all going to meet and do it. Yeah, got a motion to second, everybody in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I think it comes through at the same time. Discuss it, and on the trip to Washington DC, it's conventional meeting, same meeting I went to last year, and I first had turned it down, what going to go, and they wrote a letter, and we had to let them know, I think y'all got a copy of it, maybe mail rack in there, and the other, by the fourteenth of February, we didn't have to meet them, so. I went ahead and planned, and Mayco is going to pay fifty, they're going to pay five hundred dollars on the trip, so.
He brought us back some money last time, didn't he? I'm ready to go back.
Swinney made the motion, also, Cherry, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Well, I can guarantee it now, I couldn't guarantee it. Well, I can guarantee, now, I couldn't guarantee that, 'cause we come back, we thought we wouldn't get the same number before, we come back with three point four million dollars, so...
You got the damn already, you're very humble, you know?
Yep. Dan Sheldon? Well, I want to say a drop, what we need, I wanna go after, is try to get some infrastructure, paving, uh, patching, whatever it needs. I know we got eight hundred seventy-four thousand to do some paving, we, that won't go very far. Uh, we need to get, we, our roads is in terrible shape and, uh, uh, we need to do some patching, if we can use any of this money, if it's on our, our street funds and things for taxes, which I know won't go very far, but, well, soon as we get it fixed, we'll do it. See what we got, then I'll drink back in front of the council and see what direction we're gonna go or how much we can go, amount of money we got, that's the only thing that'd be useful or anyway, so... But I, uh, I also gonna ask for some discretionary funds from the town and equipment, money to purchase some equipment, things that, well, to get a cent would be worth, I guess, besides that, a bit of five hundred dollars to go, so...
When it comes down.
Yep. Item six there is ground and brake drives, what happened to one, Keith Grumley.
School quarter.
You making a motion?
Making a motion.
Paul made a motion, need a second?
No, second.
Jamie, second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
Mayor Paul, Daryl, that's your luck to tell Miss Judy again how good that was, and I can't wait for her to get open.
She's open right now, but...
It's free tonight.
Yeah, you don't get no better than that, I just love the bread, everything is delicious, so...
After the closing, that's all, y'all will get to, I did get, have a good one in general. Uh, next item is the germ, have a motion to a germ?
I'm not motion, I'm sure.
Jury made a motion, need a second? That's a, Marty, second, all in favor say aye.
Aye. I believe you love counsel, just the way you can make that.
Pretty important. I got a copy of this.
Has that been hanging with him?
And, well, you know, it's in your mailbag.
Okay.
I got it after, uh, General's wrote, on the fire department, and we closed there, Tracy.
I'll get with you after later.
Uh, on cleaning the blocks out there, you know, that's why, uh, leased out on it, and Bert come up with this idea, uh, a little bit stained, to go over it, and I asked him whether this powder happens to be restained, he said, no. Well, I've never seen anything, you put stain on it, you didn't have to re-stain it, about every year, every other year anyway, and, uh, if they can't clean it, my recommendation, y'all, y'all have your opinion, but my recommendation, well, if they can't get it clean, then I think they need to relay the blocks.
The price we got in that building.
That's right, because that's too high-priced building, a little set out there, definitely.
I've never seen nothing that you put one coat of paint, one coat of paint, that done for a lifetime, I've never, I mean, it may be, but I've never seen one. And if we get us something that every five years old, we got a plant, we wouldn't hold it there.
It was in the wet shade, you can just put on me, they make a lot out of it.
They would appreciate everything else on it.
I say...
That's some kind of bone stuff, so... They might take what the sand blaster do.
And they put it on mason jar and puts the top of it.
When I built my house, I had the same thing, just three weeks and I had a problem.
They don't have no heatproof cover. But it's pretty white, and it's wet shade, and you just plug that in and it's...
Could we present with this as a guarantee? Till the two years, year or five years ago.
Before you touch the top of it, you blow off.
I don't say they have to on you.
Yeah.
I, I told her, I have a lot of them, they don't have... I mean, I, I like them, certainly, I have been on them, they don't last, we don't... Let me just read them out to you, did that's like, God, she said, they lost garbage all day. Porsha noted, we said, please allow me to... My husband, uh... We need about a fire station.
I don't, I don't know if they were talking about that, but always something about that, they were...
We believe it covered the ceiling.
Come back, take a bunch of it out and redo it.
If you put paint on the ceiling right now too, it has to be painted. Says, if you and your council approve, we'll ask them whether to apply a test period to determine if you want to do all the blocks, uh, please let me know. I'm like Paul, though, I don't think they give to us, I wanna know without, within a year or two, if it covered it, the dent, and they're still beyond the duty, and that's a thing that would, they, that's something Scott, I need to ask.
I think the price of the building out there, we, we deserve other things, we don't want that.
Also talked to him about the proof building and, uh, he's still trying to get that guy to come out, and they said they'll fix it, so...
Really gonna fix it?
It's just a matter of... Saying that for a lot of the year. He did say it must be really let you down, that, that, you sure out.
Yeah, I think, I mean, we're getting a little point, I don't know how much money that we got coming back from famine, whatever, they can have theirs.
Yeah.
And, and we've got a year, and they've done very little to try to...
And we're still holding hope about about ten thousand fifty-two, he shouldn't be having big help because of engineer and architect, if they draw it in and they build it like he said, he should be clear on it. And then, of course, he's doing his homework too.
I mean, if we can't get Bert blocked and look right or whatever, I'd rather see it burnt.
Can I see that brochure thing, is that a stain or is that a seal?
It'll be, well, it's a stain, it's supposed to seal it.
Well, they saying that they gonna clean it and then stain it, seal it.
Yeah, I said it was all portion.
I don't want them to clean it because they haven't cleaned it so far.
They said a special, a guy specialized in that out here and he told me to run, said, if anybody doesn't put a lock around another building, run from it, you know, for it. He said, I do this for a living, he said, I'm telling you, get clean, and I said, set set for so long, he said, get some bed and hit it, it cannot be cleaned. He came out here and had his white suit and everything else on, he worked almost a year here, and that's a...
What if, uh, what if we, uh, match it? Max Fire Hall and our city hall and police department, whether we break or whatever we do, match it?
I want, I want you guys to go, when you cross Avalon on one thirty-two River Road, look at that new TV eight building on the right, right across, you know, the corner, there's Kangaroo Service Station. As you go towards Florence, as you cross Avalon there on one thirty-three River Road, look at that building they built, looks like stone, maybe the block, but it's, uh, it looks good. I pulled it up the other day and it's closed when I came back and I was gonna go in and see, but I got the guy's name, Lake over there, I don't know if it's stone or that, uh, certain type of block, but it looks like, uh, one of the old timey courthouses that used to be and it, it's real sharp. So, when you pass there, you guys take a look at that and see what you think and...
I don't care, most anything look better than what we got, I mean, for four hundred and something thousand dollars.
I saw about the new police department and, uh, city hall.
I looked for them.
'Cause I already told Bert, I think some of y'all were, that we're not gonna go in those split locks out on these buildings, that we're gonna go, uh, to, uh... Uh, re-break or something like, if we were to have to.